Can you guys hear me? Can anyone hear me?
Yes, hi.
Hello. We'll be starting in about five minutes. I'm just getting things ready on my end. A few bunch of people here. Just keep everything muted until we begin.
Hi, Rob. I'm here.
Got it, Marie. Thank you. Just bear with me while I get a few more things ready and we'll probably start at six or just a couple of minutes after.
Perfect. Okay, and this is Tracy Letter. Nice to meet some of you who have been emailing. I'm with Delaware Engineering and I'm be here for the public hearing if there's any questions or comments.
Great. Hi, Tracy.
Hi, Tracy. Thank you.
Okay.
Technical things. Fun, fun. I see you, Ms. Patty, but I don't hear you. I had a meeting last night, too, and I couldn't get on. I had to phone in.
Okay. Um. Was somebody having difficulties with speaking?
I was, but I'm on now.
Okay. Patty, were you able to get this to speak? We we see you, but don't hear you.
Looks like she's muted.
Do you know how to unmute on the program? Somewhere down the bottom, probably the bottom left, it'll have a microphone icon. Mute or unmute here. I can actually ask you to unmute. It'll give you the option. Try it.
Can you hear me?
Now we hear you. All right, I'm going to share up the meeting. I'm going to try to get us to go live on Facebook so once that's all set, we're ready to go. Everybody see the meeting PowerPoint? All right, great. All right, bear with me while I get this going live on Facebook. It's always a little quirky.
Hey, Rob. Doug with the Eastwood. Galaxy 51 is me, not an outside person.
Trying to be incognito tonight, Doug?
No, just having a little problems getting on and I didn't get a chance to type Eastwood Press in. Forgot. So it's it's not a spy.
Okay, about one minute away. It looks like we are live, actually, so we can get started. Okay, all right, so at 6:03, I'd like to start. Call the session, the regular meeting, Board of Trustees, which falls. This is a rescheduled meeting from February 9th, which I'll talk about more in a moment. As always, we are going to do Pledge of Allegiance. I have the flag on the screen. If you do not have your own flag, just ask that you mute yourself before we begin the pledge. And I'm going to stop my video so I can stand as well. And here we'll do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, and roll call. Vote or not roll call vote, that's coming later. Roll call, Marie, please.
Okay, Mayor Allen.
Yeah.
Deputy Ryan. Trusty Alton. Trusty Marpy.
Here.
Trusty O'Malley.
Here.
And Trusty Pine. I know I saw Craig on before. And Attorney Gilchrist.
If he can hear me, I'm here.
We hear you, Craig.
Got you. Thanks, Craig.
Hello.
Attorney Gilchrist is present and his attorney angle on tonight, Rob?
And I was going to join us later.
All present. Thank you.
All right, great. I'd like to entertain a motion to open a public hearing related to the CDBG grant application to replace the Rogers Avenue water tank. So I have a motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily, in a second.
Okay.
Thank you, Bobby. Before I go further, I did I did want to quickly review our standard online etiquette. When you're not speaking, please mute your audio. So that we don't have feedback issues and you're encouraged to use headphones, ideally headphones with a microphone built in, but not necessary. So there's no feedback loop between the speakers on your machine and the microphone. And if two or more of you are watching the meeting in the same room, please make sure to only have one person's audio on. All right, so we have the public hearing. Oh, that says Robert Flores, but it's in fact not Robert Flores who's here. It is Tracy. Tracy, if you can take a couple of minutes to share with everyone just a quick reminder on what this project entails in the CDBG grant.
Okay, this is a community development block grant. It's actually fiscal year 2020. They're really getting that out, which means that there might be another round coming up at the end of this year. We don't know anything about that yet. For infrastructure grants, you can get a maximum of $1 million for things like water tank replacement. There's no match requirement there. The plan here would be to take care of some of the issues with the 70-year-old tank at Rogers Avenue. The Department of Health had done an inspection and had requested or required proposed plan of action to take care of some of the leaks and developing cracks. Apparently, the village had done some work several years ago, spending about $100,000 to try to repair some of those leaks. Some of those repairs have not held. It's it's still an issue. And it's probably the best in terms of long-term planning to replace it with something updated. The idea is to replace the tank. It'll be on the same parcel, just a little bit over because the one is a partially underground tank and this one will be a standing tank. There'll be some booster pump work there. The booster pump at the site is confined space entry, which makes it difficult to maintenance on a regular basis. Specific requirements for safety for confined space entry. Instrumentation upgrade, security fencing, basic site work. We don't yet have the total budget. You know, it's 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 up there, but the max that you can request is 1 million. So it won't be over that, I don't think. Oh, it's due March 5th, and after this meeting, there should be a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign documents and we will get all that taken care of as soon as we get everything and then get this application in.
Excellent. Thank you, Tracy.
And I just want to let you know that I'm here also.
Thanks a lot.
Brilliant. You're both here. Thank you. Thank you both, you, Robert and Tracy. So for those of you unfamiliar with the CDBG grant process, it requires a public hearing. We will open the public hearing now. We'll leave it open for about 30 minutes or probably longer. At this point, if we have a people to be heard section for this specific grants in this application, so if anyone would like to speak or ask questions to the village or to the engineers at Delaware Engineering, now is the time. We will have a people to be heard section later. Today will allow you to discuss anything else you want to bring up, but this one right now is specific to this public hearing. So trustees or Andy, is there anything you'd like to add or ask?
You have a few questions. I'm a little concerned for the residents of the area. Basically, it's going to be a standing tank. How many feet in the air would the standing tank be?
So it's going to be less than 30 feet. You know, beside water depth will be approximately 20 feet. And then, you know, you get towards the, there'll be a dome roof. So, you know, obviously it'll go, it'll be higher in the middle, but it'll be less than 30 feet.
Yes, sir. Have we notified the residents of the area about the public hearing at all? Senses to be a change for them. There's probably three or four houses on that street that probably will have a big, huge dome tower in front of them rather than a nice scenic view of the valleys or who's it.
So this meeting was was noticed, right? And we do have to go through Seeker, which.
Yeah, this was noticed in the paper and online.
Yeah, but you put if you put notices in the public notice, rarely anybody ever reads them. And we haven't really reached out to the public at all on the change of that. I mean, pretty right now, it's very unintrusive and a three-foot dome tank is going to make a little bit of a difference.
Robert, where the property is, this is not on the edge of the road, right? It's further back.
That's right. It's farther back. And when when you see the application, there'll be a drawing, a proposed site plan. Okay. But there we we do have to go through Seeker and a seeker, we would invite, you know, the adjacent property owners. But this is this public hearing is for the just make initial application.
So there are further public hearings and we would have a chance to invite local residents, especially the most local, would be most affected to to come and talk and share thoughts on the site plan and such, right?
That's right.
Robert, are these typically those blue-looking towers or they could be different colors to fit in with the environment?
Yeah, you're it's the style of tank you're thinking about is correct.
Light blue.
Yeah, they have kind of a limited number of colors. You know, forest green, blue, brownish, white, or but kind of the choices there.
Right.
Robert, how are you familiar with the Rensselaer Street Pump Station?
I am.
How can you make comparisons to generally the blocks we have, obviously haven't decided on the design yet because we're not at that stage, but can you make comparisons of that one versus this one?
Very similar. So the tank style will be very similar. You know, you you have a chance to pick colors. And that has a booster pump station that is above ground in the building. So that's again what we're aiming for here.
Is that the same height, same width approximately, or too early to tell?
Very similar in size because they're both in the 300 and some thousand gallon range, you know. One might be 330,000, one may be 350,000. I believe that tank is a little taller, though, than we're discussing, but I don't know the exact height of that thing.
Yeah, that is a big change from the current one. I just hope that we as a village, let the residents in that area know that there's going to be a change and it could really impact some of the residents' views on. I'm not sure the name of the street. It's on the corner of Rogers and.
Ashley.
Ashley.
Ashley Drive. Robert, is there room, if you do get public comment from the residents, do we have any room to move it so it wouldn't affect any views of any of the village residents on that area?
When you see the site plan, you'll see the land that's available. It's kind of the back part of the of the lot. So, you know, it's it's a setback from both Ashley and Rogers Avenue. But, you know, if you are elevation-wise higher than that tank, instead of looking down onto a concrete tank, you look down into a, you know, a round dome tank.
Right. The concrete tank is is only about what, six feet from the ground itself? Right.
I'm trying to share with you guys right now, the Google satellite.
Yeah, actually, where your cursor is, you see that big tree?
This one here?
The one behind it. That one. So that's that's the spot for the future tank.
Right in this area here?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't even know how far back the property line goes. Do you know?
Yeah, we have a site plan that shows the approximate property line there.
And this is actually downhill right here, down gradient from Ashley Drive, correct?
Yeah, it's it's about level with it.
Oh, it's about level. Okay.
It pretty much borders Ashley Drive.
I wasn't sure exactly where the downhill slope started because I know a lot of Rogers is downhill.
Well, it is. I mean, it is uphill, but I wouldn't say not drastically.
Okay. All right.
So, so, I mean, without a doubt, you have a neighbor immediately adjacent, and then you have that row of houses on Ashley Drive, right?
Correct. There's probably five houses, maybe six on Ashley.
All right. Any other questions from Kevin or any of the trustees or anyone out there in the meeting?
Hey, it's Babs. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, my question is what, if that other tank is being decommissioned, what do is it just being sealed then or what happens to the tank that's there?
Well, we have a lot of choices. One is to, you know, crush it and backfill with grass, you know, topsoil and grass, so you'll, it's gone forever. The other is to leave it as is. And everything in between.
Sorry, I went back on mute. Is that then going to be a part of the later discussion, the next public here, like if you apply and you get approved and the money and then you're choosing the color of the water tank? Are you also going to discuss at that point?
So basically, what happens is, you know, it always ends up being a decision, a cost decision. Because you can you could build the new tank and do what you need to do. And now the question is, do you have enough money to to remove the old tank? So then that'll be the village board decision whether that's, you know, a cost that's should be undertaken or not.
And is there are there benefits or whatever, like what happens if you leave it in and what happens? Like, what is there? Because I don't know anything about, I'm just curious, like, if you leave it, does it mean that something happens 10 years from now? There's some sort of leak of some sort, like if you filled it, like, I don't know what happens if you just fill it in or what the risks are one way or another. You know what I'm saying?
Right. Well, I think ultimately, I mean, you'd hate to have a, you know, 40 years from now, still have an abandoned tank on site, right? So I think the long-term goal should be to to remove it. It's just a matter of whether you have the money to do it, you know, with this project or that would be something you could do in-house or whether you do it through paying a contractor to do it.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Rob, if I can, Gilchrist here. Hello, hello, Robert.
Hi.
I just want to make it clear for the for the trustees that that the purpose of this public hearing and then the resolution to be considered later in the meeting is simply to authorize that the grant application be submitted. And that there's a concept plan that goes along with that, but that there will be further proceedings later. Seeker will need to be complied with later and an additional public hearing will be required. Is that correct?
That that's all true. Yes.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make it clear for the trustees that what's in front of you tonight is a resolution simply authorizing that the grant application be made and processed. There will be further proceedings before the project can move forward. Seeker needs to be complied with. And then the board needs to formally approve the project. This this is merely to submit the grant application during this round of funding.
Yeah, I understand that, but sometimes things get to a point where it's already being put up and people never know or even hear about what's happening.
Now that makes sense. And actually, I just had someone send me a photo from Street View, so I'm going to share up Street View just so we can see that a little bit more accurately. Are you guys seeing the street view on my screen now?
Okay, I can see it.
Of course. And of course, the irony is that with zoom up, I cannot see other controls. All right. So this is the existing location and the concrete tank. And we can progress uphill to various locations and kind of just get a general idea of the area and the layout where it would be. So yeah, it is a little bit down gradient, but not all that much. This is like 90% cool and 10% creepy that we can do this. I just want to share that. All right. All right. Any other questions or comments? This could be from anyone at all.
Maybe this is a good time for Tracy to just run through the things that we have to document from this meeting.
Yeah, sure.
There, there is a list of documents that I believe I have sent that we need to include on the application from this public hearing. We will need the affidavit of publication for the paper. An example of any postings you put up either on the Facebook page or in paper around the village or, you know, any other postings. Minutes of this meeting showing that there was a quorum. The resolution authorized the patient to apply. There will need to be a commitment. Sorry, it's not. You don't need a commitment letter. What else is on there? I believe that's it. The minutes would cover attendance for the board and anyone else that you have signed in or asked questions would be in the minutes as well. So I think that's about it. There are other forms that need to be signed apart from this public hearing.
Marie, did you get all that?
I have, I have the list and I have most of what she's waiting for.
Awesome. And Tracy, one thing to note, the minutes won't be official minutes until they're approved in the March meeting, which will likely be after the deadline. So it'll have to be 10 minutes.
That's fine. We'll just make a note of that, that you meet once a month. Then, you know, that's all you can do. And I will be sending some of the other forms when they're after this meeting so that they can be officially signed by the authorized representative. So I'll be in touch with Marie.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions from anyone out there?
I just have a question for Robert before he leaves. He sent an engineer up to take a look at our village sidewalks, especially on Route 22 and some of the other concerns of breaking concrete and some of the ADA crosswalks. Robert, did you get a chance to review some of his photos and have any comment on that?
I did. And, you know, some of the stuff did not age well, right? I mean, it's I think it's less than 20 years old.
About 15 years old.
Yeah. So like Tracy mentioned at the beginning, this is this is technically 2020 CDBG money. So we expect there will be a 2021 round of grants. And I think that would, especially since it includes ADA ramps, that would make a strong application.
That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, unless I hear anyone else with any questions or comments. We will continue on with regular business. The public hearing will stay open for at least another 10 or 15 minutes. So we hit our 30-minute threshold. I've already set a timer to make sure that at that time we'll close the public hearing. And I will give another opportunity for people to share if they want to regarding that. And again, thank you, Tracy, and thank you, Robert. I don't know if you need to hang out, but I'll close the public hearing in around 15 minutes, just so you know.
If you'd like us to hang out or one of us, we can. What's your preference?
Andy, do you think it's necessary? Do you think we're good at this point?
I think one should be available in case any member of the public comes in with a question or comment while the public hearing is still open.
All right, that sounds good. That makes sense. All right, thank you. All right, let me move on to the next part of the meeting. Announcements. I have a few listed about on the agenda, but I'll just review them real quickly. First off, I decided not to appoint a trustee to fill the seat that was made open when trustee Lewis stepped out because she moved out of the village. Since we're close to the next election, I kind of figured the next election would would be the simple, easy way to decide it. I do know that there were several individuals who reached out either directly to me or to some trustees. I don't glad to see that. So thank you, guys, for your interest, and I hope all of you guys are are going to be running or organizing some sort of campaign, but and I'll talk about that in just a moment. The upcoming election, which is on March 16th, has is going to have a ballot that has a mayor position for two years, three trustee seats for a two-year term, and one single trustee seat for a one-year term. That's specifically the seat that remains open. Now, based on submitted petitions, the ballot will have one mayoral candidate, three trustee candidates who are seeking a two-year term, and no candidates on the ballot seeking a one-year term, which means that write-in votes will determine who was elected for the one-year term trustee seats. We, as a government entity, can't really go any further and explain anymore. Eastwood Press could always do something on that if they wanted to or any news source. Um, if they wanted to or any news source or any people could, you know, say or do whatever they want to say. Uh, but I just want to make sure that that was clear and I will put something specific on Facebook that just sort of summarizes everything I've just stated. Uh, next announcement. Yeah, Kevin.
If we can get guidance from NICOM on election day, can we have people inside the, uh, the witch hall for voting that day? Or is this going to be all absentee?
No, we could have the village hall open. We're going to have, um, the same precautions that we had planned to have, which is we'll have spots for them to stand in wait that are six feet apart. We'll have sanitizer there. We'll have, um, we'll probably go overboard. We'll probably even have some ventilation. Um, and they can come in the front door or the side door and we'll we'll space people out properly.
So if someone didn't feel comfortable coming in, could they could go absentee, I would assume.
Andy, Marie, you want to comment on that? I think so. I just don't know what the procedures would be.
Well, I understand that. Yes, you could do an absentee, um, ballot and, um, it's going to be one the same as the November election did.
And Marie, that that's my understanding too. Subject to check. I I haven't heard any different rules regarding, uh, the current village election cycle.
Alright.
Yeah, the last update I got from NICOM stated what we've just talked about.
Alright, Marie and Andy, let's work on language later this week that I can put on Facebook and on the website that specifically outlines all this and includes information on absentee procedures. Thank you, Kevin, for bringing that up. That was, that's awesome.
Can I ask, um, if there are absentee and in-person votes, when is the final count?
The final count is that evening. The polls close at 9:00 PM and the, uh, board actually gathers together and has an official meeting. The votes are counted, um, and, uh, the role, the vote, the voting results are, um, approved at that point.
Oh, I see. So the absentee is the due date is earlier.
Is that, is that, that's my understanding. Is that how it was, Marie and Andy, for the November election?
Yes, that's correct. The the absentees need to be into, um, the village office by the 16th.
The difference between, the difference between the village and the, uh, November election is that absentees are counted after the election where the village, uh, absentees are counted election evening.
Gotcha.
Which means, Marie, could people dropping off an absentee ballot just simply put it in the main lobby in the, um, at any time, even up to that evening?
Yes, if they don't want to come inside.
Okay, that's great. Alright, thank you. Uh, St. Patrick's Day Parade. We have a letter from the St. Patrick's Day Committee that I just wanted to share real quickly. If I can find the right tab. Hold on a minute because I have 1,100 million windows and that is not a real word, but just roll with me here. I think this is the one. Yes, the letter for the St. Patrick's Day Committee up. Okay, so this is the letter. Um, the 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 most important points are what I highlighted in the agenda first. They're postponing it, uh, until later this year with the hopes, um, maybe in September of being able to do it in a way we can celebrate safely. Uh, they are having a March 13th, uh, walk around the village. It will be socially distanced, uh, wear green, especially on the masks. Uh, and and feel free to join. That would be great. And also where, uh, they are asking people from March 1st to March 17th, uh, to show that you're celebrating Irish, uh, everything, uh, with green lights and 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 exterior houses and shamrocks and and everything go crazy. And I summarize that enough, Marie and, uh, Kevin?
Yes, thank you.
Alright, brilliant. Thank you. And trustees, I had one more letter to share. Um, actually, it's on this tab here. Uh, let's see, is that, is that s- letter shared now?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm just going to read it. I was hoping to talk to you, and this is from Bruce Bateri, who is the, uh, vice chairman of the Board of Directors of the Town of Rescue, the Town of Who's a Rescue Squad. Uh, I was hoping to talk to you all in an open forum. However, the pandemic will not allow it to take place before your budget meeting. You see, I believe when you ask for help in a cause you believe in, people need to see the sincerity, uh, in your eyes, but I will try to convey my petition in written words as best as I can and as brief as I can. We all know that it's getting harder every year for volunteer services like the Town of Who's a Rescue Squad to maintain their services with the ever increasing cost of operation. As we have seen, uh, squads like Berlin and Petersburg have been forced to discontinue their services. Uh, now towns are actively trying to come up with a solution or replace these life-saving services. Make no mistake, they are life-saving services. Our community is very fortunate to have a strong dedicated group of volunteers providing us with all the knowledgeable medical help. They dedicated hundreds of hours their first on time to serve us all. As a person who was called for help from my loved ones, their heroic efforts will never be forgotten. In years past, the village rejected requests of yearly scholarship to the rescue squad. The reason at the time was that the village was absorbing the huge cost of providing the townwide 911 service. It was a large sum of money at the time. However, in 2010, the village turned over 911 service to the county. As you can see in the resolution, I have provided the savings, uh, to the village was substantial. Yet to date, no support is provided to the squad by the village. Stunning revelation when I came across it, when you consider that over half of the 908 calls in 2020 were within the village limits. Yes, 908 calls in our town. This year, the town board has raised its yearly scholarship, uh, sponsorship, excuse me, amount to 15,000. I asked the village to match that amount as a yearly contribution, cost of operation and medical supplies has gone up monthly since the COVID-19 pandemic. Please help us help you. We never know when we will need the squad at our door. Please make sure that they, uh, will show up in your hour of needs or the squad today. Bruce Bateri. So I just wanted to share that, um, with trustees. Trustees, um, if you want to comment now or later, as we are getting the budget together, um, with your thoughts on this, and it's certainly welcome now or welcome later.
Hey, Rob, this is Craig. Um, I just want to express my support. You know, Bruce, I think is spot on there with his, um, letter. And, you know, if we can find a way to throw some support behind them, uh, I would be in favor of that. And maybe we should, you know, look at our overall giving and just reassess where we are amongst the different organizations, you know, as a whole.
Okay.
Alright, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Craig.
I guess my only question would be, is the town gave them $15,000. Did that come from the town fund or the town village fund? There was one fund for the, uh, town residents and the other fund is a village town residence, which we pay taxes for. Did that come from the combined fund or did it come from the? So essentially, I'm saying we could already be paying part of that 15 as a village taxpayer.
Because village members also pay town taxes.
Correct.
Gotcha. I see what you're saying. I don't know, but I can find that out.
Rob, and also, correct me if I'm wrong. Aren't we still paying the county for our 911 services? Or should I say, aren't they still billing us?
Uh, that is an ongoing matter. Uh, in the past, that that
Right, yes. And so I, in I, in, I understand what Bruce is saying and I totally get it and support it 100% with, and same thing with Kevin.
And I know, I know that he's referencing the cost savings that initially it was made the decision, um, possibly not knowing that the county had also still been building a village for some amount, just not the the overall cost of what it had been.
Right, right.
I'm not against about supporting the the, uh, the rescue squad. I think that we could, should do whatever we can. But it would seem like if they're paying out of, as a village taxpayer, we're paying twice for the same service. I'm not sure whether that's fair or not.
Well, I will look into that and I'll, uh,
Well, well, Kevin, that that might not be true though, because the the town budget has town outside the village residents and town in inside the village residents. So that that fund might be coming from town outside the village, that $15,000. So we wouldn't be getting, it wouldn't be double ta- double taxing the the village residents. I'm I'm saying, I'm not sure that's where it comes from, but that could be from our experience on the town board. I I know that there's two, two sets inside and outside the village.
Correct.
Of, uh, so I I we'd have to find out exactly where that money is coming from to make sure that that's not happening, what you're saying.
Right. It seems to me like if, if it's coming from taxes that we pay to the town, then we are paying into it. And we should let Bruce and whoever else needs to know that we are. But they don't think we're like just getting services and we don't care about paying for them. But if it isn't coming from there, then I think we should contribute to it.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you, guys. I'm going to move on to the mayor updates. Uh, I have, uh, a few. Uh, and actually, the last one I'm going to pass over to Bobby. Um, but the first one is I just want to give an update, um, on how we're doing here. Uh, the Allen household, uh, my wife is recovering, uh, but it is slow. Um, I think she's one, uh, of the the cases where we hear about that the symptoms weren't too bad initially, but then the fatigue hit and it got real. Uh, and that's where we're at. So, um, things are progressing, but they're progressing slowly. I actually did not return to teaching this week, um, so that I could stay home and continue, uh, to help out here. Um, but the good news is that the quarantine approach we took in the housework, the rest of us, uh, remained COVID negative and did not get it, uh, which is great. And I I just very dearly want to thank, uh, the board, um, the residents who, uh, threw out their support and their prayers, uh, for us and, uh, for the flexibility from everyone for, um, rescheduling the last meeting. So I appreciate that immensely and just want to say thank you. Uh, number two, uh, as a chicken law update, uh, we did take some really good comments from trustees and residents regarding, uh, the previous version of both chicken law. And we plan to introducing the revised proposed law at the March 9th meeting. And again, as as standard with our local law, we'll introduce it. We will set a public hearing. Um, and then after the public hearing where everyone has a chance to make comments, the board will have the decision to, like, um, basically, we can go a full spectrum. We can adopt the law. Um, we can table it, uh, further discuss it, or we can can it and start from scratch or anything. So that's the process with that. Uh, and finally, I'm going to turn it over to Bobby, who has been involved with the Who's a Police Reform Committee to talk about, uh, the plans there. Bobby?
Yes, Marie, did you, um, send it to the rest of the members of the board?
Yes, I did.
Okay, so all the board members you have that what Marie sent you regarding the is the newly created, uh, in New York State mandate, Who's a Police Reform Committee? And we're looking for a community input. And so, uh, Rob, do you want me to read this or or just put it in, you know, summarize it?
You can summarize it because we're going to put it out there later and blast it out to everything that we can.
Okay, so based on the government, uh, executive order 203, uh, requiring each local government, uh, in New York State to have, that has a police department to adopt a policing reform plan, April 1st, 2021. And based in, in, you know, in compliance with that, uh, on October 13th, we started the committee. And we're at the point right now, um, that we have of going to put out a post in with the goal of the community, a goal of the committee and what it, what the purpose of the of the committee is. And it's available for public input up until March 9th. Correct me if I'm wrong, Marie. Is that correct? Until the date of March 9th?
Okay, Bobby, what's happening with that is actually on March 9th.
We allow
we're gonna, we're gonna present the document to the board on the 9th of March. There will be a two-week public hearing. And on the 23rd of March, we will have a special meeting, um, where public people, when people can speak, they're also welcome to send in comments between the public hearing time to that 23rd of March notice. The document that I sent everybody today that you have in front of you is going to go out on Facebook to just, um, tell people what we
Is just, right.
Up to.
That's the release, the post for. I got ahead of myself, dear. I'm sorry. Yes. So the public comment will be coming after the after it's presented to everyone. And just the board knows, uh, we decided last night that there'll be, everybody will get a a copy as far as the, uh, board members and there'll be paper copies available village clerk's office for any of the residents, uh, from after the 9th, uh, prior to the 9th, as soon as we're done fin- finalized. And for our review, so we'll, we'll be prepared for March 9th. You'll have it, we'll have it by next week, Marie, we said, right, by hopefully Tuesday?
Yes, we should have it all done on Tuesday, but it will go to the board and it will be in print form to the board for the night.
Andy, anything you want to add? I'm sorry, Bobby, you can keep going.
No, no, I was just going to say, based on that, we'll be, we'll be acting on it, uh, reviewing it and discussing it on the March 9th, the public hearing on the 23rd and 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 everything goes, we'll be acting on it at the April, by April 1st. It'll be in compliance with, right, right, Andy? Is that correct? Uh, Bobby, that's correct. So the projection is the plan's available for public review and comment. Maybe it's next week, but certainly when the documents presented to the board of trustees on the 9th. It's available for public review. People could submit written comments. It would be anticipated that the board hold a special meeting on March 23rd at which additional public comments can be received. And, uh, the board could act that evening to approve the plan. Uh, but it it does, under the governor's executive, uh, need to be completed by April 1. And again, I'll just remind the board that the executive order does allow the approval of the plan to e- be either by local law or resolution. And I would anticipate at this point that this board of trustees would act through resolution to approve the plan. And again, the plan is, you know, any, um, uh, police policies and procedures to address those issues under the governor's executive. Okay, thanks, Andy.
Alright, um, before we go any further, um, before we get to the people to be heard section, I want to give people one last chance in the public hearing uh, side related to the CDBG grant application to speak and, uh, share. Uh, and if no one wants to speak regarding that, I will close the public hearing, uh, for that, and then we'll move on to the normal people to be heard section. So does anyone want to speak or share regarding the, um, public hearing of the CDBG grant application? Alright, hearing none. I'm looking for motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Thank, thank you, Craig. Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Good. Further discussion? On favor, thumbs up or an aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Alright, passes. The, uh, public hearing is officially closed at 6:43 PM. Um, trustees, I have later in the meeting, uh, under new business, the resolution. I could jump to that right now and approve that if you guys want. Is that alright with everyone? Andy, that's good with you, right?
Please.
Alright.
Works for me.
Yeah, Rob.
Thank you. Someone's got some extra sound coming in, so just watch your muting and such there.
It's the chief.
Uh, hi, chief.
Hi, I don't think it's me. I'm pretty quiet here.
Alright, alright. So, uh, I think I have shared up a resolution regarding intent to apply for community development block grants funding in the public infrastructure category. Can you guys all see that? Okay? Alright, uh, Andy, don't need to read all the whereas statements, or can I just go to the end?
Uh, you can certainly go to the end. And this is just, uh, uh, the recitals, uh, mostly procedural and program requirements. So you can go right to the, uh, the body of the resolution.
Alright, uh, now therefore be it resolved that the village board authorizes the mayor, Robert Allen, to submit an application to the Office of Community Renewal, CDBG Public Infrastructure Program for a maximum of $1 million. And shall leave a copy of the application materials at Village Hall for inspection by village residents. The mayor shall act as the official representative of the village to act in connection with the submission of the application and to provide such additional information as may be required. And the application requires that the governing body of the applicant provide for and encourage citizen participation through a minimum of two public hearings, one at the time of application and one during the grant administration process for the purpose of obtaining citizens' views and responding to, uh, propose, uh, to proposals and questions. And environmental review procedures contained in 24 CFR Part 58 applies And environmental review procedures contained in 24 CFR Part 58 applies to this program. And that the Village Board will assume all the responsibilities for environmental review, decision-making and action pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act 2069 and the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR. And this resolution will take effect immediately. I need a trustee to offer the motion and second it, please.
I'll make the motion.
I can do it.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Craig. Any further discussion on this? In that case, Marie, can we have a roll call vote?
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Marby?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Switch my chair back here. All right, people to be heard. As we have done the past, when called upon, please begin with your full name and street address. Share or speak to what you would like to discuss. And at this point, I will open it up to anyone who would like to speak.
Yes, Rob. Harold Stevens, 63 Wilder Avenue.
Hi, Harold.
Just wondering, we've been talking about this for quite a while. Where do we stand on getting some kind of a law passed and forces making people shovel their sidewalks? You know, it's kind of discouraging to drive around and see people walking in the streets because they can't walk on the sidewalk because they haven't been cleared. Something's got to be done about it before somebody gets hurt.
We've had no progress in terms of making new laws. One of the issues that we're facing right now is that we have a smaller squad at the DPW than we have had in years past. And we have had, well, I can't get very specific, but I would just say in the time of COVID, it has been hard to keep up with all the demand that we have, especially.
Yes, but this should be.
We've had.
This should be the homeowner's responsibility to shovel some of these sidewalks. It shouldn't be landing on the villagers' plate to do this. The people that, you know, the homeowners, the landowners, shop owners should be out there shoveling their sidewalks.
I, I have actually agree. Because I had to walk to get to my shop, the Thorpe's, I had to walk in the street or across the street to get there because the building, the owner that's between us doesn't come and shovel his walks or ice them. And if there's no law, I could be wrong about this. Well, I have no idea what I'm talking about, so that's a good. But, but if there's no law that says the landlords have to shovel, that's just a, a thing that's always been, and now we have people who aren't doing it, then that would make the village liable for a big ass lawsuit. Excuse my French. If somebody.
That's for sure. You know, you take some of our neighboring villages, Cambridge says that, you know, they have to be shoveled within either 24 or 36 hours after the, after a snowstorm, that the sidewalks have to be cleared. You know, we could do something like that here in this village.
My other, my other question is why do some places get shoveled and some not? Like, why does Gumbys get shoveled and other businesses or, and other businesses don't?
Well, we can only speak to what we do. And one of the things that we do extra out of the, the, the normal requirements for, for roads that we have is the line that goes down Mechanic Street towards the Liberty Street, Seiko Bane, and the, what's the other company that's back there? My brain just froze up. Something in the old name.
Oak Mitsui? Which is not Oak Mitsui anymore.
The other one down there. I can't remember the name of the business. I'm kicking myself. They just changed, they changed names a couple of years back. Anyway. Because that's just a long path. But that's something that we took on as well as we do the sidewalk. There's a couple sidewalks we do just because we know they're high traffic. They're not technically responsible, but we take them on. But it's that weird balance of trying to balance personnel and equipment and costs and keeping tax down versus that. But I understand that's not specifically what you're saying, Harold. You're more frustrated at the businesses who just aren't doing what they're supposed to.
And not just the businesses, but in outline areas, homeowners aren't even taking care of their sidewalks.
Why don't? Thank you.
You know, up, up my way, I can go down, you know, myself, my neighbor, we keep our sidewalk cleaned. But the next place down, they don't bother shoveling.
Yeah, Rob, I think Neil could probably address that better about what parts of downtown he does. In some cases, because of trees and fire hydrants and the size of the sidewalks, they can't get down certain sidewalks downtown.
Right. And but, but again, what I'm hearing is, is not what we're doing. It's what other people aren't doing. And how do we enforce what's on the books and what exactly is on the books? Marie, Andy, can you? Can you add this to the agenda for two weeks? Let's do a, a deep dive about what the law is and let's, let's, let's figure out the enforcement piece. And Harold, I'll try to get you an answer for our next regular meeting in two weeks.
You know, I'm not griping about what the village is doing. I'm griping a lot. The individual homeowner is not doing.
Harold, do you know if it was a law that, that homeowners?
I don't know. I don't know if there's ever been a law here, Deb.
People, people just done it out of because that's the right thing to do.
I, I shovel my sidewalk because I don't want somebody to fall on it. And I end up with a lawsuit.
Yeah, well, I don't have a sidewalk in my house, but in my, in front of my shop I do, but the landlord takes care, makes sure it's shovel.
Yeah.
But the building next to me doesn't.
Yeah, I, I, I see that all too often.
And the other thing is, is now that the village is looking better and better and more people are coming to visit and coming to shop, it really doesn't present well when the sidewalks are not shoveled and when they're icing.
All right, we hear you guys. I'll try to have an answer for you in a couple of weeks, next to the meeting.
All right. If you can give me something, Rob, I'd appreciate.
Will do. Thank you, Harold.
All right.
Who else would like to speak?
Patty Austin here.
Hey, Patty, how are you?
I'm fine. Thank you for allowing me to talk. My name is Patty Austin and I work, live at 37 Cummings Street. And I'm very concerned about some artwork that came up on Facebook. I sent to you and Marie my expertise and/or experience with buying public art. And I want to, I want to hear the background. I understand that, you know, this is the Valley of the Owls and that it's been a long time thing. But, you know, Cambridge is going through a huge thing with culturally appropriating. I don't know, whatever their high school is or something like that. But more than that, it's nothing personal to anybody who put it out there. It's just that the artwork to me is not a sympathy, sympathy. Excuse me. What do I want to say? That word, symphony? I want a symphony. So like this woman beforehand said, you know, now that people are coming and they see such business and, you know, all these little treats and shopping, we can do better. And I think that I know that, the scuttlebutt is that the, the artist is the one that did the Housak provisions. And I don't have anything, it's not personal. If that person can do something better, I propose we start from scratch.
Hey, Patty, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're speaking specifically to the mural design on Walgreens, right?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to make sure you didn't say that before, that's all. Sorry, keep going, please.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. At one time, Kevin and I talked on Facebook about what we could put there. And I had thought maybe a sculpture, but it really, you know, painting is fine, you know, that it really, because there's not that much space. But I think, I propose we start from scratch. I'd like to hear background from Kevin or others. I, 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 um, there's, the, the, I'm sorry. Let, let, let me just say that I think that now if we're going to stop at that stoplight and we have people coming in, we need to have it be beautiful. And we need to get away from the owl. Why don't we do a Mandela of fishes? Or take from Kevin's Housak past and present, present, there are multiple postcards that he posts. There are, there's almost a myriad of things that could be done. And I am more than willing to help ferret out or, you know, let's have a high school student be the art director. There's all kinds of things that can be done to start again and have public input, some options. Because I only found out about this on Facebook. Why wasn't it put on the village website? Why? It seems to me, you know, dropped from heaven. And I, I think we can do better. I think that people need to have input and that we can just have something that's better. I could, I, I know that I gave you all of my reasons. You have the entire text of my thoughts and my background. And I'd like to hear the who, what, when, where, why and how on this in the past and propose that we do, you know, usually, public art, you get three bids or you get three options for, for the citizens.
Often what you do is in whatever art magazines or publications, you put out like a call to artists to.
Exactly. And, and he has all that information that I sent to him because I have 30 years of experience of buying public art. To mainly to attract scientists to symposiums, classes, all kinds of things. Banners, booths across the nation, for scientists across the nation. And I know when art is just not right for something. And I hate to be, I hate to sound, what's the word? Snobby, but that's not right. Whatever I saw is just not right for that space. And I, I love Housak Falls. Kevin knows it. I want it to be something beautiful for my town. That I left the District of Columbia for because I love Housak Falls.
You do.
You know, I would like to, I would like to speak to that. First of all, it was brought up at several Village Board meetings, two or three. And it was also put on Facebook, which Patty's referring to. There was probably 80 comments, 80 were positive. And the only negative comment actually was Patty's, where I think she insulted the artist and she called me and said, what the heck's going on? It was only a rough draft and it's not the, the total picture of what it's actually going to look like. So you know, I, I think it was a little unfair. And she, she felt so bad that I took it off the, the Facebook page because she was so insulted.
I'm sorry, an artist that has any worth takes input just like someone who, that, like a student that goes to play in front of Rob Allen, has to take the input and adapt as it is. That's just how it is. And what is wrong with starting over to get the best possible art for the Housak Falls residents? I, I, this is the first time I ever saw something from, from our discussion. And we never talked in person, Kevin. You might have been talking with some other Patty, but we never talked on the phone. It was on Facebook.
That's correct.
So many other possibilities that I, I, I want to stand my ground and say, you know, it takes courage to come over here to all you guys and say, this is wrong. Why, why do we have to accept what one person has presented? I'm just, I mean, where I, where I come from in Bethesda, Rockville, Maryland, you know, not my backyard. I want people that come here to be welcome. Honestly, I feel like I'm on a an episode of Schitt's Creek to say, you know, I have an outside set of eyes to say, that art is just not right.
Barbara, you, I think you wanted to share something?
Yeah, hi, my name is Barbara Zill and I live at 26B Willow Street. And it's coming up on one whole year that I have been in this apartment. Thank you very much. Takes a bow. I don't want to put my video on because my hair looks awful. So I'm a relatively new member from New York and Portland, Oregon. And I just wanted to throw my voice in to say that I actually loved the design of the owl. I think it's absolutely gorgeous. But I do agree with the, I believe her name is Patty, that I also did not realize that perhaps it was on Kevin's page. I don't know Kevin personally, but I am on the Housak Area Here and Now group and I didn't see it there. So I love the owl. I think it's gorgeous. So there's a disagreement between us. But is there a way to perhaps slow it down a notch and do another sort of round of, hey, everybody, like an official posting and, and sort of put it out there so that village people can give feedback by a certain date or something like that? Or like Deb said, put some sort of announcement asking for other artists to submit ideas and then something along those lines. I mean, I personally think the owl is beautiful. However, if not enough people knew about it, is there a way to just kind of give it a round two? Not necessarily say absolutely no to the artist, but just give it a slight round two or a 1A to get a quick another review? Is that possible?
Thank you, Barb. And Kevin, before your reply, I just want to say something, especially as a musician, musician, performance major, music teacher. Art is, is a very hard thing to critique because we have a lot of our own strong personal opinions of it. And I want to just make sure that as we present our opinions on this, we're not attacking people, we're not attacking things. I know Kevin has done a lot of work on this. I know that the artist has done a lot of work on this. And I also know that Patty wants to share her expertise in what's right. And I appreciate Barbara, what you had to say. Kevin, did you have something you want to say?
No, just that we've really already hired the artist that is doing it. And I'm not against a change in whatever the art would be, but verbal agreements made between her and I to, to do the artwork.
You know, Katie May is an incredibly talented artist. So if we wanted to talk with her and
alter it.
And see if she could, maybe she could add something. And she's very versatile. She's, she, she can do a lot of different things and a lot of different styles. I've seen her portfolio.
Kevin, do you mind if I share the picture?
Wait.
No, it's okay. Actually, the, the size, the size of the picture, the one that actually was on Facebook, wasn't even to scale where it actually was going to be. It's going to be more like the size of the Housak Provisions mural. And, but I, I did show this to a whole host of merchants downtown and they all thought it was a great idea. And I'm not, like I said, I'm not against changing it at this point. But she's, she's ready to go in April. And I spent almost a year working on this, trying to get the spot from Walgreens and the company that owns the property itself.
Which in the past has always said, no, no, no. So this is a big thing.
Rob?
Yeah.
Um, I had asked for background and I didn't, I didn't hear it. You know, like, why is, I mean, where, who, who, who provides the money for this? You know, was there any announcement so that other people could compete? It's just, I mean, to me, it's, it's, there's some sort of shade on it. And I'm not, it's not personal. It's, I want beautiful art. So when I drive by it every day, three times a day, or new people come to town, we can be proud of what we have. We have folk art that's gorgeous. Um, the Moses mural, right? We want something that would be, I mean, how are you going to compete with that, first of all? And second of all, why wouldn't we put up, you know, the United States flag and the Housak Falls flag? We already have art that we could put up there. Um, I just think that.
I don't, I don't think there's any, any intended shade. I think this is something that, that Kevin had been pursuing well before I became mayor. And previously as Rite Aid, they had always said no. And they, under new ownership, they have finally said yes. Uh, so I think Kevin put in a lot of time and reached out to an artist and started moving on things. I think that's just where the process is. Kevin, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, I take offense to saying shady about this whole deal.
I could have used the wrong word.
We, we, Patty, we brought it up twice at Village Board meetings. I don't, I don't know whether it was ever in the paper or not, but I take offense to that because we actually did this, we discussed it a couple of meetings, so.
Well, I think you could let the offense go because what we really want is something good for the people of Housak Falls. Just let it go. And, and and see that, you know, we all can, can get something that's better and we can have it beautiful right there. I mean, I.
That is beautiful.
In, in other people's opinion. I think that we need to start from scratch. I, I would, I dare say that not the people on Willard, is it Avenue? It goes up the hill. They, I know many people didn't see it.
Well, I do. Well, I do, I do wanna wrap this up because we do have a lot of meaning to go through. Um, we will take these comments back, Patty, and, and sort of make a decision what we wanna do. I do know that a lot of people uh have commented in a very positive way on the proposed drawing, but that also being said, Kevin is, is saying that, that, you know, they're, they're willing to take in more feedback and, and make some changes and modifications so it fits.
I, I, can I also say that um, Huzick, Huzick Rising has talked about murals. Kevin, you know this too, that we've talked about big murals and small murals. Um, murals that people would stop by and have their picture taken with, all kinds of cool stuff.
Exactly. That's what I'm getting.
Wait, but that's not, I'm not, but that's, that's Huzick Rising. You, you should, well, we haven't had a meeting in ages because of COVID, but um, if you send um an email to Huzick Rising at Gmail, I think it's dot com, might be dot org, then you, then you'll, you'll be on the list to know when there are meetings and stuff. Um, also, there are lots of really good places in Huzick Falls to put murals. And we were hoping that or thinking that we would be able to put murals in a variety of different places, not just in that one place.
By the way, Patty, I'm sorry. I just have to apologize. I didn't mean to, I got cut off. My microphone fell out. I meant to say, and if someone thinks it's beautiful. So apologize if, if you felt like I was. And I'm just a member of the public.
I, this is not personal. I just want beauty for our town. And I want, um, I don't want us to have to go back on it to say, you know, um, Walgreens just got a brand new CEO. She doesn't want culturally appropriated art, you know? And I wanna spread artists um being able to, you know, why do we have to have just one artist? Only one person. There are like many artists in this town. It doesn't have to be my art. I'm not on that level. I want, I want, you know, to spread the love and, and, and get to beauty.
All right. Thank you, Patty. And thank you for everyone's comments on this. We are gonna move on. People to hear. Yep, thank you. Uh, any other people to be heard?
How do I get out of this?
All right. Any other people to be heard? All right. Hearing none, we will move on to the next few things. Let's go through reports in minutes. Uh, trustees, you guys, I think, have the uh reports that I sent out earlier today. Um, let me open up mine on my other machine here in the background. Here. All right. Treasure reports. Any questions or anything anyone wants to comment or highlight? Hearing none, then I'm looking for a motion to approve the treasure reports.
Okay.
Thank you, Bobby.
Second.
Thank you. I think that was Emily. All in favor, thumbs up, say aye or both. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries, please report. I hear Chief Ash on the line. Take it away, chief.
Uh, I am here. Um, last year or this year for the January, we had a total of a hundred and nine calls. Last year at this time, um, there was a hundred and sixteen. Arrests for this month were seven. Last year, there was thirteen. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the calls there, but the arrests were for um some possession of marijuana, some traffic arrests, criminal possession of controlled substance. And the most serious was a sexual abuse, third and rape case investigation that was conducted by our department with a joint investigation with the State Police in Brunswick. Um, I just wanna touch base quickly on Bob's comment with the Reform Committee. I, I gotta say that this, this group has worked really hard. Um, they brought a lot of light um, to the, to the police department in very positive ways. There was criticism in a very positive way. Um, and that criticism, criticism was, was constructive criticism that really worked out well. I think you're gonna find the last, or the um the package that's being delivered to you guys is very professional. Um, I don't know how to thank everybody on that committee. They did an outstanding job and, and I'm very proud of uh, been able to work with them. Um, and I think you're, again, you're gonna see that with the, the final outcome of this. And I think some departments throughout the state are way behind where we are. Um, and I, and I wanna thank Andy for, for pushing it along and Bobby Ryan for pushing it along to to say how we had to get this thing up, up and going. And, and we did it and we're gonna meet our, our deadline. On another positive note, uh, I've been in conversation with Unity House. Um, I'm not gonna mention the location, but there is a possible location. I believe um, there's gonna be a walkthrough between Unity House and that organization, hopefully within the next week. As soon as that walkthrough has been done, Unity House is ready to go. They'll be putting a schedule together. Um, we're looking at two days a week where Unity House will be here. Um, and fully operational. Um, and I know that she came here and did her uh presentation to you before, so you know what, what the services are gonna provide. Since we've only been in phone conversations with them, I believe we've used Unity, Unity House up here to assist our, our community at least three or four times. Um, and that's not only, not during the daytime, that's been at two o'clock, three o'clock in the morning that I've been able to make a phone call to, to their contact and they've responded quickly and, and have assisted. So I'm really excited about this Unity House and probably by the March meeting, um, we'll be able to tell you the location where it is and the um, information and how we're gonna get it out to the public that they're here and up and running. And that's it.
Thank you, chief. Any questions from trustees? All right. Thank you. Um,
Um, Chief Ash, we have a little problem here on Abbott Street. I don't know
Yep, yep.
Um, can we keep an eye on that, please?
The arrest was made um, Sunday night.
Sunday night? That's all the way at the end of Abbott Street?
Yes. And you can gather your, or get my, my uh cellphone from the mayor and give me a call and I'll be more than happy to explain it. I've, I've kept the mayor and Bobby up to date on what, what that situation is and where we stand with it.
Okay, cuz she got, the neighbor got, the neighbor who was my friend got yelled at this morning by somebody who lives there, so.
We have addressed that this morning as well. And matter of fact, just while this meeting was going on, an individual was here and they, and myself had a very nice conversation about things, so.
Okay, we can talk, we don't have to talk about it here.
Yeah, you can give me that, you can give me that call. I'll be more than happy to, to, to uh speak to you about it.
Thanks.
But as the chief always says, and he means this, if you have a concern or question, call him or call the police.
And if you call the police, just please call the nine-one-one number and they will get the number, get it, the call over to us. And if it's that important, they'll reach out to me on the, on my phone and I'll return their call to you directly. So please don't hesitate or don't worry, you're not disturbing me. Most people have my cellphone number. I'm more than happy to talk to you.
Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Deb.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Bob.
Uh, hearing none, looking for motion to approve the police department report.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, Deb. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. All right. Uh, code enforcement report. Mark is gonna try to join us later. He is double dutying it at a, another meeting, which he is running. Uh, so uh, trustees, do you have any questions or anything you wanna point out now? And we can wait until Mark gets back to discuss further things.
I, I do.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a landlord, a, a, a business neighbor who continues to be told she can't put things on a post, on a light post, and she continues to do it. Um, and then she gets told you must have it down by the end of the weekend, which she does, but this time she didn't. And it, it looks like garbage. I mean, it makes the village terrible. It's hand done and it's falling down and it's been snowed on and she doesn't come in to check it. So can I, is that something I can just take down? Or, I don't even know. Is that code enforcement?
Andy, Marie, let's add that to the list of uh laws we need to fully vet out and figure out who is the enforcement side of that.
Actually, I think Mark, Mark's addressed that several times and after they've been taken down, they've been put back up again, even though he's told her that our local law states you can't put uh signs on our light posts.
That was my understanding too. So I think uh, if that
She still keeps putting it up.
So maybe it's time to start and write it, write an issue summons.
I don't know if Bobby's uh mic like paused on everyone else's, but it kept pausing in these awkward moments. And I thought that like
I'm sorry.
Bobby was being beeped out or something. It was just really funny the way it paused on my side of things. Uh, no, but we understand exactly what
Did you hear what I said, though?
Yeah, I just came
No, what I, what I said. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And it is, that's a count enforcement thing.
All right.
Yes.
I'll touch base with Andy and I'll touch base with Mark on that.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Um, I think I'll wait until later to approve that report and see if Mark joins. Um, and move on to the clerk, deputy clerk report. Any questions that you wanna highlight, Marie?
I think we're good. Uh, again, you know, bills are still coming in slowly but surely, death certificates and uh transfer station um, going on. So we're, we're there and holding down the fort.
All right, great. Any questions, trustees? If not, I will take that motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Craig. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Carries. Highway Department reports. Uh, Bobby, anything you want to uh address? Or highlights?
Uh, nothing. I just briefly, uh, yeah, Neil's done with the Christmas tree pickup. Uh, tree pots are all, should all be off the streets. Um, and he's just pretty much been dealing with uh, salt and sand and plowing for the storms.
They have had a lot of storms recently, a lot of small storms,
Yes.
which I would have to imagine is more frustrating, especially when they go for like a day and a half and only produces inch and a half, but it's still two or three plow runs.
Can I ask a question?
Right.
Barbara.
Absolutely, Barbara.
Um, I don't know if Neil is on the call right now, but is there a way to get a thank you to him and his team? He's been doing a great job down on our little, very icy, close to the river corner with not a whole lot of space to put all this snow. So if somebody wants to, how do we do that?
Well, we will pass it on to him. I think he may be watching from somewhere.
Okay. Well, it's down in the second ward, right on the wonky corner by Fourth Street. Where there is no Third Street, so he just is, it's really easy to drive down here. So
If you wanted to write a personal note, which is, will probably be very long.
Hey, now.
You can, you can
I am loquacious and proud.
You can write it and you can always stick it in the, the box in the Village Hall and then somebody will get it to him, I'm sure.
Oh, okay, great. And I'll even say, Deb said make this, Deb Alter said make this extra long.
Great.
Fine, blame it on me.
Anything else?
Um, is this coming up later? No, that's it.
Our Bobby, Kevin, what's up?
Uh, Neil put up the signs for the parking in the Village Parking Lot. And uh, there's been both some comments pro and con about the, the new parking regulations. Uh, some people said it, it works great, especially for people that are doing business in the short term, staying for an hour or so or less. Uh, people who are overnight parkers and long-term parkers are, aren't very happy about it. But overall, I think it's worked out pretty well.
I'm interested to see, cuz I know there was some early confusion as people were, were trying to interpret the signs. Is that confusion gone and it's, it's either a, we're really glad this is helping the, the parking lot or really frustrated because we can't park there overnight? Is that kinda what we're at now?
Yeah, I think so. I think the, the most uh confusion comes from the signs that say overnight parking from ten till seven AM. And so what's the parking there the rest of the day? Is, is it allowed at other times during the day or is it just uh you know, just during those times?
So logistically, it's working? Is that, is that what you're saying? Or there's still a little bit of confusion?
Yeah. I think there's a little confusion about the outer parking spaces. The inner parking spaces that has signs saying uh, parking from seven till ten and no overnight parking from ten to seven, whereas the outer parking spaces just say no uh parking from, overnight parking from ten till seven. So people can park on the outer, but I'm not sure people aware that they can park there during the day as well.
All right, I'll, we'll look at it and, and I'll, I'll kinda drop by and see if people are parking. If they're not parking there, uh, maybe we'll, we'll add some signage there just to, to clarify, but we may, we may
But, but I have seen that people are, the ones that were there for a longer term are now parking on the outer and it actually has worked as far as snow removal goes.
All right.
That's a good
Deb, Deb, I don't know if you have any comments since you're a business owner and you park out there at times.
Yeah, I, I park as far away from, from the John Street, Church Street businesses as I can. Um, as a business owner, but um, I think, I think it's better. I think I'm, I know that I've heard people say it's much easier to go to the Credit Union and um, I'm sure it's much better for Little Sprouts. Um, so, and I know people like to park in the back to come visit me for other reasons. So that's been better. And um, the person who usually parks in the alleyway hasn't come to shovel his sidewalk, so he hasn't been here at all.
Yeah, Neil has also put signs in the alleyway and nixed the post office saying fire lane, no parking. So I think that's helped as well.
Yep. I think people will figure it out. I mean, if you can park, maybe, I mean, I don't know. If the sign, when the signs fade, you could put a new sign that says twenty-four hour parking if you want, but I think people will figure it out. And I think it's, I think it's better. And I think it's, I think, I think it's necessary to as more businesses open.
I agree.
All right. Thank you. Um, unless there's any other questions, I'm looking for motion to approve the Highway DPW reports.
I'm making motion.
Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you, Bobby. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, carries sewer report. Anything we need to highlight? Seem to be um, fair amount of the same um, business as usual. Um, decent um gallons delivered, uh, which is good. Um, unless you guys have questions about it, I will take a motion to approve the Sewer Department report.
I, I hate to ask Rob, Rob, but isn't this, last year, we only, we took in ninety-five thousand and this year we only took in seventy-seven? Is that correct?
Yeah, at this point, we would, we have taken in eighty-two thousand and last year, this point, we took in one hundred and one.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry, I was looking at the year end. I'm sorry, I was looking at December. I, I didn't even think about it. Yeah, I know. So it's, we're down. We're not, we're not picking up sludge. Our people aren't dropping off their sludge, is that it?
Yeah, less than compared to last year. Uh, last fiscal year comparison.
Right, okay.
Just a couple months and, and, and in all likelihood, as I look across it, July was a surprisingly low month. October was a surprisingly, and November were, were lower than they were as compared uh to last year. I wouldn't be surprised if that's another COVID byproduct.
I would think so, Rob, cuz a lot of times people have events with porta potties and that kinda thing. And I'm sure they're not out as much as they would have been, you know, with all the events happening throughout the year.
Yeah, that makes sense. And now we're starting to come around to the season where COVID was actually going on this time last year. So it'll be interesting to see if there's a pickup that sort of evens it out. All right, unless you have anything else, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Sewer Department reports.
Motion.
Thank you, Kevin.
Second.
Thank you, Deb. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I only heard like two or three ayes. Have we got enough ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
You are out there listening, I see. Thank you. All right. Uh, great. And the Water Department reports, um, anything you wanna highlight, Emily?
Um, not on that one.
Um not on that one.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat. I think everyone is just kind of waiting for the municipal water supply study decision coming uh in a month or two. Uh more on that later. Um unless there's any questions, I will take a motion to approve the water department reports.
Motion.
Second.
Wow, 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 wow. All right, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
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 Well, I'll get all those ayes pouring in. Love it. Thank you. All right, approved. Uh if someone sees that Mark has hopped on, please give me uh that heads up. Uh and we'll, we'll pop back to the uh code enforcement. Do you have any questions for him?
I think he popped down a couple minutes ago.
Mark, Mark's on. He's on. There he is.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you. Your double duty is uh impressive.
Hi, Mark.
We've, we've gone through all the reports. Um Deb brought up a concern about. A specific location that is back to posting things up on signs on street posts. Um we were thinking that that is in fact uh prohibited by our local laws and also that that individual has been spoken to. And it's still happening. That's about a good summary. Deb and Mark?
That's exactly right.
Okay. I'll take a ride by there tomorrow.
All right, and um if you feel like the previous enforcement um approach has not been working. Feel free to uh talk to me or Andy um to see, I don't know what our options are on the next level. Um going, but it sounds like we need to go to the next level.
Okay.
Do you guys have any other questions for Mark or Mark, or anything you want to point out specifically in your report?
Uh no, uh just here in case that there was any question.
Uh the question I asked before about sidewalks, is that in code enforcement or is that highway?
What was the question?
Enforcing um businesses and or residents who aren't shoveling sidewalks in the given amount of time.
That's probably a code enforcement issue, I would guess.
All right, I did promise Harold that I would get an answer back to him in a couple of weeks as we do a deep dive, so we'll add that to uh our list. And include Mark.
That's probably a law that should be looked at and updated.
That's, that's one of the things we need to look at. And it was interesting because um I think it was Harold who actually mentioned uh a, a, a local village. I'd be interested to see what they have on the books and what their enforcement policy speaks to. So I think that's kind of where we're going to go in the direction of the deep dive there.
Yeah, I mean enforcing a law that refers to the four noon. You know, probably wouldn't hold up in any court, but we could, you know, we could certainly. Uh you know, try and persuade people to, to comply.
Andy?
Well, my suggestion, if you take a look at what's there, it's a, a very, very old. I can't recall if it's an ordinance or, or whatever was referenced. And uh take a look at uh maybe updating that through, if the board is so inclined. Uh through an updated local law dealing with the requirement to shovel sidewalks. But that can be reviewed and I think the mayor and Mark and I should review that.
Is that in the same list of ordinances that includes how to uh tie up your horse in the village?
Yes.
Wait, we haven't got chickens yet. Now we have horses?
It is in that ordinance.
That is outstanding.
Yeah, dumb question of the evening. What's the difference between a lawn and ordinance?
Uh Rob, I'll take that one.
I wasn't jumping in Andy, I'm letting you take that.
Historically municipalities acted by ordinance. Uh now there is in New York, the municipal home rule law and most municipalities act through a local law. There are still statutes that indicate that, you know, the board can act through law or ordinance. Uh but the common practice now is just acting through local law.
Thank you. My concern is that if, if there isn't a rule that the, the landlord has to do it, or the landowner has to do it. That means the village is liable and if somebody gets hurt, we get sued. That was just a comment, doesn't need an answer.
That's all right. Thank you. Uh and Mark or anyone else, anything you want to mention about the code enforcement report? If not, I will take a motion to approve the code enforcement report.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Opposed? Carrie's, thank you Mark. Thank you Mark for hopping in as you are double duty previously.
You're welcome. I'll be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute myself, but I'll be here if the question comes up.
All right, and uh just watch out because in the future it may have to be the code enforcement slash chicken report. We'll see. All right, uh we have minutes to approve from the January twelfth regular meeting. Were there any comments on the, the minutes that were sent out trustees? If not, I will take a motion to approve the January twelfth regular meeting minutes.
Motion.
Thank you Craig.
Second.
Thank you Kevin. All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Good. That's everybody, so that's it. All right, great. Trustee committee, uh committee reports, I'm just gonna go by who I see on the screen. Bobby, anything else to add?
Uh just had a question. Um what I talked about this afternoon. Um Andy and I'm not sure if this is something probably for you. The, the village currently has a lease for the town of Huzick Little League fields. Correct me if I'm wrong, Rob, is that right? We leased the land to them for their use. And some village residents. Quite a few village residents bring their dogs down there, let them run around. And apparently some pick up after their dogs and some don't. But i- in, in the return to that, they took off the gates, the town of Huzick Little League did. And now recently, over the last week, they put signs up, no pets allowed. So the, the people who are down there still bringing their pets or were, who are taking, picking up after their dogs have no where to bring their dogs. I realize it's not a dog park. I'm just trying to find out, do, does the town of Huzick Little League have jurisdiction to do that? In, by leasing the land from the village? Cause it's still village property, correct?
Uh Bobby, if I can respond, in general, yes, if the village still owns the property. Um we'd have to take a look at the terms of the lease because that would in general. Identify the, the rights of the parties on the property. Uh lessee only has those rights that are generally spelled out in their lease when, in this situation, when you've got a, a group leasing municipally owned property. So we should review that if there is a written lease, we should review that lease to determine uh rights of the little league under that lease as lessee.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not trying to cause any trouble. I'm just trying to ask so I can give someone an answer, that's all. I'm just trying to make sure we can get to the bottom of that, but that's good. If you can look at that Andy, we can, that'd be great.
I just want to say as a dog owner who keeps my dog on a leash and picks up after them is, oh drives me crazy that people don't. Like they're, do either, put their dogs on a leash or pick up after them. And then when it snows. What, what, every, people who usually do, don't. What is that? It was rhetorical.
All right, thank you. Anything else Bobby?
That's it for me.
Deb, anything?
No. Go ahead.
Uh Craig?
Sorry, Rob. Um I have nothing to say.
All right, Emily? Or Kevin?
Um just that I did meet, I think I mentioned it earlier with uh one of the engineers from Delaware Engineering about the uh. Handicap uh warning tracks are called on our sidewalks throughout the village. A lot of them are really in bad repair. Hate to see us just sticking blacktop on our sidewalks to, to fix or repair. And hopefully next year we can get some funding for that to, to fix those. I mean, it runs all the way from. The church or the River Street Bridge all the way up to the Huzick uh Falls Town of Huzick line. So hopefully we can get some money for that.
All right, thank you. Um Emily, anything you want to add?
So we did have some issues with, at the water plant. But I think we'll do that update in two weeks. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, that's fine. It's, it's nothing pressing. It's not a big deal. So it's, it's fine to discuss in a couple of weeks.
Okay, and then. As for Schwama, Craig is gonna look that over. So I think that's it.
And my apologies Craig for not sending that attachment out. The first time I thought it was attached. I'm a dope. Still learning email after all of these years. All right, thank you. Um I've already closed public hearing. Yeah, Andy?
I can ask if, if Marie can track down that Little League lease and just email it over to Bobby and I, that'd be helpful.
That'll be interesting. I'll give it a shot.
Okay.
We could also reach out to the town of Huzick supervisor who may in fact be on this call if uh he has any information on that.
Yeah, will do.
Is not speaking. All right, uh old business. The only thing I had is the transfer station uh updating and I have not uh had a time in the past few weeks to breathe, let alone set, set that meeting. So I'm hoping as things. Settle down here and I get back to where we will have that meeting, Kevin and Emily, and my apologies for not getting that going yet. So I'm looking to table the discussion regarding price changes at transfer station.
Motion.
Thank you Emily, a second.
Second.
Thank you Deb for the discussion. All in favor? Tabling? Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, Carrie's, thank you. Um and I know that right now we're actually reviewing. The bid language that Erswama is going to put out. Um to handle the. Emily, help me out here. The trans, the hauling out um with transfer station, correct?
Correct.
All right, that's something we're gonna get to the, later this week and hopefully have that figured out by the end of the week. Cause I know. All right, new business. Uh first off, we've already done the first item on the agenda, so that's done. Um second one, I have something to share here on that. Um so I have shared on the screen the resolution authorizing. Uh retention of technical consultant regarding New York State DEC Municipal Water Supply Study. And proposed remedial action plan. Uh Andy, do you want to just quickly summarize this so I don't have to read all the wherestes?
I will. So what the proposed resolution is uh would allow the village to retain a technical consultant. To assist in the review of DEC's municipal water supply study. Which will lead in, in the procedural rollout of this. Uh to a proposed remedial action plan. Uh ultimately, this will then end up in what's called a record of decision or a rod that, that's the procedure that the department. Is going to be using in terms of the alternate water supply, or at least that's what the department has indicated the procedure uh would be utilized. What this resolution uh would do is retain. A technical consultant to assist the board in the review of those documents. And to be able to advise the board on technical issues uh during the review and assist if necessary in the preparation of comments into the department. Uh on, on principally on the proposed remedial action plan. And. It, it's understood that these are specialized expert services. What's proposed in the resolution is to utilize Sterling Environmental Engineering, Mark Millsfall's office. Uh the village has utilized that office for technical consulting services on environmental issues in the past and continues to do that. It's also noted that uh because these are expert and specialized services that this is. Not subject to public bidding and that the board is legally authorized to retain those services without competitive bidding. And lastly, it's understood that, and thank you for highlighting that, that the. Uh fees for that environmental uh technical consultation. Will, will be paid by St. Cobain and Honeywell uh in an amount not to exceed thirty thousand. And there have been commitments by both companies to fund that account to pay for those technical review costs.
And just to uh bounce off of that, uh brilliant Andy, thank you for that. Um this is. A huge decision. This is one of the biggest decisions the village is gonna make and it's gonna be a decision that is going to have uh affect us for. I, you know, ideally the next hundred years. That's the way we're thinking about this. Uh we are blessed to have um. Our village attorney who has a background in environmental um. Knowledge and, and the environmental side of being an attorney. We have. An environmental attorney who has handled and dealt with uh water contamination issues uh for other municipalities. Yeah, and Sterling Environmental has been great um with the uh situations that we have run into on the sewer project and the landfill. Um they are known and I think, I think Mark Millsball has even been called in as an expert witness in trial. So. We want to surround ourselves with expertise uh and knowledge and that is what we're doing. And one of the things that we suggested. And I think Emily, uh it may have been on um a SIPWIG meeting. Where I put the suggestion out and they heard it and they agreed to it, which was, which was great to see um from the companies that they would um. Uh put this money forward so that the village could bring in um. Uh specialists to look over this document and, and, and give, you know, their analysis or recommendations, so. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls in regular session duly convened as follows. One, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzick Falls hereby retains the environmental engineering firm of Sterling Environmental Engineering PC. For the purpose of assisting the Board of Trustees in the review and consideration of the municipal water supply study and prep. Uh to provide technical assistance in the preparation of any comments on the prep that may be filed with DEC by the Board of Trustees. And to provide technical assistance regarding any further proceedings by near state DEC in the consideration of the municipal water supply study and prep. And the administrative determination rod on, you know, alternate water supply for the village of Huzick Falls for the water supply system subject to paragraph two below. And paragraph two, all professional fees, costs and dis- uh disbursements of Sterling Environmental Engineering PC. For the services described here and shall be paid by St. Cobain Performance Plastics in our honeywell and shall not exceed the total amount of thirty thousand dollars. I need someone to offer the resolution and second resolution, please.
I'll offer it.
I'll second it.
I think that was Emily and Craig.
Yep. Right.
All right, thank you. Any discussion or questions from the trustees? Or anyone? And that's what you get when you have really great straightforward uh resolution explanation. So thank you Andy. Uh in that case, we will take the roll call vote.
And trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Alter?
Yes.
Trustee Mark B?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you.
Great, thank you guys. Thank you Andy again for that. Um peddler requests. Um we uh did have discussion regarding a peddler application. Uh and a request from Verizon. Let's do the peddler application first. We have a request from Mr. Dingling, uh who is the ice cream truck that has done things here in the village in the past. Uh I know in the past, we have actually refined and been specific about some of the protocols which they. Uh have, I think, adjusted to which included lower volume, um specific days where we don't want them to do it such as Halloween. Which is not on the list because they're asking for permission to do it from April second to um October first. And they've, uh we've also been specific about. Things like when you're storing the ice cream, please turn off the music. So if there's any other cars coming nearby, uh they'll be heard by people. A lot of great suggestions from current and former trustees. Um anything to add to this, Marie, or any questions, comments from uh trustees?
I sent everybody a copy. Um everything seems to be in order from her. So I, once you approve it, um we'll go ahead and issue that for her.
All right, trustees, any issues?
Nope.
Then in that case, um does someone want to put up a motion to approve um the peddler application for Mr. Dingling?
Motion.
Thank you Emily. Thank you Craig. Any further discussion on that? All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, Carrie's, don't tell Bushner. Next one, we have a uh request from Verizon files to go door to door. Next one, we have a uh request from Verizon FiOS to go door to door. This is actually a renewed request uh from a different person, Verizon. I think we had a similar request last year and we wanted them to come to a meeting to speak about uh where FiOS is and isn't. Um, and we also, I think, wanted to express some frustrations about the rollout and uh the lack of clarity as to where it is and isn't in the village and get information on that. I don't think we have a specific pedlar application from them. Um, but we do want to know how to respond to them. So trustees, I'm thinking um, as we've requested in the past, we request them to show up to a meeting and discuss things and answer questions. Thoughts?
Yeah, I think, I think that's reasonable, Rob, and, and you know, I think is part of the pedlar application and there's no point in peddling services that aren't available to residents, um, you know, outside of the service area. So I think that's a relevant question to ask.
I know that, I know FiOS is on High Street, but uh I think it comes down um, Main Street and connects off to the streets facing the uh the east and goes up High Street and that's about all they did in the village of Huzik Falls. I did get a postcard in the mail when they first uh put it out, but they haven't uh sent anything since.
Yeah, I've gotten a thousand postcards from them, but I, I have tens of thousands from Spectrum. You know, I switch to them. Fun times. All right, I think that's what we'll do then, Marie. I think we'll respond and ask them officially to um, if they can uh ha- have this rep hop in to answer questions about locations in the village that are offering FiOS and aren't, and why.
I'll send that out tomorrow.
All right, great, thank you. All right, thank you, guys. Um, I, oh, I would like to uh get a motion to schedule a special meeting on March twenty third at six P M for the purposes of hearing and um, of setting a hearing, sorry, for Huzik Falls. No, it's for hearing the Huzik Falls Police Reform Committee's report and receiving, more importantly, receiving comments from the public and from the board, um, along with any of the business that may come up.
I'll make that. Oh, go, go ahead, Rob, or Craig.
I'll make the motion.
All right, Craig, and then Bobby, give a second there?
Sure.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? One thing, uh, pass, thank you. One thing I, I forgot to ask about and put on the agenda. I'm gonna start with the, this question for Andy. Um, Andy, we have been approached by the, one of the local fire departments to use the Rensler um, street pump uh tank as a spot to put an antenna to extend the service for their uh radio. I think you probably remember this from, from some meetings last year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they are looking to continue that discussion and get moving on that. Um, I've spoke with uh our water guys and they're good with it. They just have to run through making sure um, that at any signals they use, don't, don't, don't um mess with any of the signals that are there. What do we as a board have to do to approve this? Do we need to have a specific plan or can we just give the authority to approve it upon review of plan? How, how do we approach this?
Uh, my suggestion would be to have all the technical issues and how it's gonna work worked out so that the board kind of has details on what it would be approving, and then we can look at uh how the village handles co-locations on their facilities. And do they require any kind of insurance requirements, any kind of, you know, formal leases? Those, I think, Rob, you and I should look at, but this, this should proceed and make sure all the technical issues are resolved and, and specifically how it's gonna work. And then the board can handle that by, by resolution uh or motion going forward.
All right, uh, trustees, are you good with us pursuing this in a very direct way so we can get moving on this in the next couple of meetings?
I am.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, then I will pass it on to um Craig Fox and Al that we are um, good with this. In principle, we need to figure out the technicals and present that, and then we'll have a resolution on it. Awesome, thank you. Um, are there any other things need to be brought up before we move to our private session on the board or Andy?
One thing, if I can, Rob, on the
Absolutely.
meeting for the twenty-third, just make it clear that I would presume the board is still gonna have remote meetings.
Yes.
And if that's, just make the public aware that it would be a remote meeting to review the uh, the, the, the plan put together by the committee and participate in that meeting remotely.
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I don't know who that is because my screen isn't telling me.
Sorry, it's Babs. Of course it is. It's Chatty Babs. That's me. Um, I stepped away for a second. I'm not sure if you said if for anyone who's interested in that open seat.
Yes.
Uh, is stuffing things in people's mailboxes okay? Is that even allowed? Like, how would I get the word out that I would like to be penciled in?
Andy?
Uh, my suggestion is you, you'll get information on that, I believe, from the Board of Elections at the county. Kevin, is that correct?
Um, well, um, the, anybody can do like a mailer or even maybe even get a copy from the village clerk, a sample of the ballot, and you can show people how to write it in, or you can use a sample ballot of the, any generic election and send that out as well.
But a mailer is okay? Like if I just print out a, hey, this is me to my neighbors, like, you know, within the three blocks of where I live?
Right, it has to be specifically placed in one spot too. If you don't do it properly, it won't count. It has to be right underneath that you know, particular office that you're running for. So it is good to have a diagram and show people actually where you're gonna write in.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And I get that through the clerk or through the, you said the county?
No, uh, you could probably get that through Marie at the village clerk.
Okay.
Well, also Bar- Barbara. Um, can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, it's, I don't know if this is an old wives' tale or if this is a real law, but you know, anything that's not officially US um, US mail with a stamp on it is not supposed to be put into people's mailboxes.
Well, that's why I asked, because I wasn't sure if that's like breaking some sort of law to like stuff something in post office boxes. That's why I asked.
Yeah, no, you, you can't. You can stuff, put stuff in people's doors, like stuff it in their screen door, or that, you can put it outside, like if they're the little red flag thing.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Gotcha.
Can't put something in their mailbox. I don't know if that's a big deal or not, but that's what people always tell me.
Anything else?
Sure. Uh, just Barb, I, if you need some examples of things people have sent out in the past, I can send you some things as well.
You're awesome. I would like that. I will ping you on Facebook.
Sure.
Thanks.
All right, great. Thank you. Um, anything else, trustees? All right, um, before I take this last motion, I just want to explain that we are going to be going into a private session to seek legal advice from counsel on a pending issue, which is the municipal landfill. Um, and I have specifically noted in the agenda that the board in connection with council will include the village's technical consultant in the private session. And the private session is gonna be held in a separate Zoom meeting, which I just emailed out to the trustees and attorneys and uh our environmental consultants. Uh, and there will be no business uh conducted after the end of the private session.
Andy, you text, oh, can you text me that link because I don't have my uh trustee email here?
Yes, I will do that in just a minute. Um, Andy, can we just adjourn the meeting and then go to the private session one? Or do we do the motion to move the private session and adjourn it from there?
Right, you've already noted, let everyone know that there'll be no business conducted afterwards. You should go into private session, come back out, and then formally close the meeting.
All right, we will do that. Thank you, Andy. Um, looking for the motion to enter private session to seek legal advice and counsel on a pending issue.
Motion.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you, Kevin, and also Deb for bonus points. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's, all right, we will be going into our private session. Uh, trustees and attorneys, I will have that open in just a minute, and Kevin, I'll send you the link shortly. All right, thank you very much.
Hey, Marie, this is Doug. The affidavit you needed for that uh, for the CP, the block grant was mailed out last Friday. Did you receive it?
I received from the first mailing, but not the second one.
All right, I will work on that for you tomorrow and get it to you. Secondly, do you need anything?